I've been ready for a long time.
I knew it. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Elizabethan City Schools April School Board Meeting. I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around the fact it is April. Mr. Fleming and I were at Elizabethan High School today. And teachers have a certain gleam in their eyes when it's getting close to the end of the school year. The only thing people look more happy are your students. So anyway, very happy you're here. If everybody would stand, Dr. Gardenour is going to lead us in a moment of silence and pledge the flag.
All right, this power heads for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please come forward, state your name and address. It's time to move to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Okay. I'm on the floor. It's to approve consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
I would want to say about our recognitions that we will be recognizing the girls' basketball team. They took a rain check on this evening. And we are also going to look at our students and recognize them for making a thirty or higher on the ACT. But a lot of our students this evening are at the band concert. And so we, those students, a lot would be involved. So we made a decision to go ahead and move those recognitions to next month, as well as Kelsey McCamey. We did want to say one thing about Mr. Harville, who has passed here recently. He was a fine gentleman, principal at the high school, fine community member. And I've spent some time this week reading a book of his that he wrote. And Ms. Armstrong brought by for me. And so we just didn't want to let this evening go without saying something positive about that and the fact that we're thinking about their family. And also Greg Pierce was a brother of one of our faculty members who had passed this week.
He also graduated. We were in school with him as well, so.
I would recommend Dr. Harville's book for all of us. It's a wonderful story, amazing story.
It really is. Okay. I wanted to say thank you to the Board, number one, to start the superintendent update, for sending me the TSBA training. I went to an employment law seminar. It was very helpful. They went over EEOC complaints. They talked a lot about what we're needing to look forward to as far as licensure and loopholes in employment law. And so we're trying to look at that in light of how we do FMLA and other issues. So it was very helpful. So thanks for the opportunity to go to that. Wanted to mention this evening that our three percent goals that we've had all year that we've been communicating to staff, we received our most recent benchmarks. Ms. Marsha Taylor and Anna Hurley are helping us with that, as well as Libby Post. And we are really moving forward. We've had teachers make as much as thirteen percent points gained from where they were. We've had some teachers make one or two points, but we're working on our weak areas and we're accentuating our strong areas. But overall, I think that we're going to get close to meeting that. So we're very enthused by our benchmark scores. I wanted to give you an update on the music room, band room. We are right now in the process of value engineering. We've been through that process now for a period of time. We looked at the controlled estimates and we were poised to start moving forward with that. We felt that we were ready to go, but we're, we've taken a little different approach. We looked at saying, okay, we have controlled estimates. We wanted to make sure that we were able to come in close to budget before we started anything. And we've been, we're getting closer to that. We're getting to the point where we're ready to put it out for bid. I know we've been talking about that for the last several months. But we feel that we are now have a project that we can move forward with. And so we're happy to do that. And we talked with the construction company today, GRC. And we also talked with Mr. Williams late this afternoon. And they feel that we're almost ready to get ready and do that. So we're very excited about the possibility of moving forward that with Phase One, which will be the new construction, and Phase Two, which will be the classroom renovation. We will be looking at those numbers. And when we bring something to the Board, it's going to be a realistic view of what we're going to be able to complete and then look at the timeframe with which we're going to be able to move forward. So when we do bring that, we hope it's going to be very close to what we're going to be able to complete. Mr. Van Haas prepared some packets for you on fundraising. And you probably picked those up on your way out this evening. Those, our fundraising efforts have gone very well. Glad to see Mr. Taylor here this evening because he is one of our visits that we've made. And it was a very positive visit with him. And we're trying to make sure that we talk to a lot of people in the community to make sure that they have a part, to be a part of this community project. And we feel like this will be a big draw for people for seventy or a hundred years. And so, but he's just an example of someone, we thank for him for being here this evening. But we have talked to lots of different businesses and individuals this week, especially, I've had several visits. And Mr. Van Haas and I have been beating the concrete and beating the pavement, getting out and taking those materials to people. But in the public this evening, if you have any questions about our fundraising efforts or you want to make a donation to the stadium or the music room, band room project, we would love to have you come and sit with us and talk about what we're doing. We think it's really special, so, but we're happy about that. I sent to all the Board members the copier information to give you an update on where we are. My recommendation at this point will be that we probably move ahead with our TA Dugger copiers. We've received a couple quotes and the buy-in on those is around $130,000 to start. And we simply, our budget-wise, we're probably not prepared to take that big of a hit all at one time. But they both have recommended that we probably go ahead and move through our leases that we currently have, move those to, we may be one or two years, and the buyout on the leases will be much less. And then we'll be able to maybe afford to do the buy-in at that point on a copier contract. So I think that's probably prudent at this point, based on what we have. I wanted to talk with the Board also about the health insurance committee. We're going to start forming a committee just to look at how we are competitively looking at health insurance for the staff. We're not planning to go away from the state, the state plan. But we are going to look at some other options to see if we can have better, more competitive healthcare for our people and have more options for them. This is not, it's going to be a voluntary thing, but we just want to have a committee look at it and see if it's feasible. And so Ms. Wilson's going to help me. And we're going to try to find different people to serve on the committee that are in lots of different situations in life, different, you know, maybe some have children, some do not, and that type of thing, to make sure that we have that. So we'll be forming that committee and we hope to have some options maybe for this coming school year. So we talked about that yesterday and met with an insurance provider about some different opportunities there. Lastly, I know this is a long list tonight, but lastly, we have brought before the Board telemedicine. And it looked to be a very good program. We felt that as it was advertised at the beginning, we felt that it was a very, very good opportunity for our children. We received an MOU and we've been working with our attorney over the last two weeks, trying to hammer out some of the details. That's memorandum of understanding between the two parties. What Ms. Owen has told us is that by us becoming an entity with healthcare, we would have to abide by all the rules and regulations as a normal healthcare provider would. So if you can imagine, if we had a healthcare organization like Mount State Health Alliance, we would have to follow everything, have our staff trained and prepped the same way. It's not really the same as what we were sold in the beginning. So she feels the MOU at this point is restrictive to the point that we would have to carry a large amount of liability insurance and malpractice insurance to be able to do it. And it would be cost prohibitive for us. And so she felt in working on that, that also we would be in a dual-party or tri-party employment situation where we would not have control possibly over the situation if something went wrong. It also had a binding arbitration agreement, which means that we would have to go to Memphis to be in a binding arbitration if there was an issue or complaint that was made or grievance. For all those reasons, you know, my recommendation to the Board is that if we want to continue looking at a telemedicine option, that this probably is not a good course of action for us with this particular company, given the memorandum of understanding that's going to be in front of us that's been passed to us. So I can give you a copy of, with all my notes from the conversations I've had with our attorneys. And if you would like to table that and maybe think about that next month, we could do that. But my recommendation was there were somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty issues in the memorandum of understanding, so, that she had issues and questions with. She did speak with the telemedicine company. And I told her to please wait until I felt the Board was informed before we could look at moving forward. So you're welcome to look at that and we could talk about this month and, you know, look at that for next month if you'd like to.
Are there other local districts that are involved in this that you could talk to?
There are local districts as far as Carter County is involved. I, I do not know what advice they've sought from their attorney or their comfort level with that. But I just felt that just the malpractice insurance and that type of thing alone was going to be cost prohibitive. But I think there probably are other companies that do it. And I'm willing to research and try to see if there are any other opportunities out there, if you would like me to.
For clarification, Ms. Peters, we believe that the memorandum of understanding that Carter County entered to was with the original company where we had the presentation. We do not know for certain that the company that we would be entering into this agreement now is the same one that Carter County would be currently using. We're not sure about that. And one additional cost, in addition to what Dr. Gardenour had said that would be required of us, would be from the technology side, which would be an extra added cost to us because we have to do certain things to upgrade bandwidth and security features and that sort of thing. So that would be an added cost to the system as well.
I think it's a great idea. I think that the fact that they were bought out by a different company in the timeframe that we were looking at, it's just, it just warrants more caution, anyway, of what we're doing. Our attorney felt the same way, so.
There are other companies to consider and look into.
Ms. Owen has worked on other memorandum of understandings that are with Williamson County and others in Tennessee. And they, they do have one memorandum of understanding that are more in line with what I think that the first company had, that's far less restrictive. And they really take a lot more of the ownership with the actual running of the clinic and those types of things. And does not require them to carry the same amount of insurance. So I think that that could be an avenue for us to get started and look other places.
All right, are we ready for the personnel update? New hire, Jessica Hayes, EHS science teacher, effective 3/26/15. Joshua Smith, lifeguard and community involvement program, effective 4/4/14. Rachel Smith, interim Westside first grade teacher, effective 4/20/15. William Ryder, interim TA Dugger social studies teacher, effective 4/6/15. Resignation, Angie Barker, TA Dugger, head volleyball coach, effective 3/17/15. Faith Stewart, substitute ESP childcare worker, effective 3/26/15. Logan Baker, EHS part-time assistant to the teacher, effective 5/22/14. Laura Beth Fair, Westside teacher, effective 5/25/15. Andrew Gooch, TA Dugger, effective, teacher, sorry, effective 5/25/15. Leave of absence, DA Bradshaw, extension from 3/18/15 to 5/21/15. Cheryl Pitts, Westside guidance counselor, from 3/27/15 to 4/10/15. Andrew Andy, Eastside assistant to the teacher, effective 4/13/15 to 4/30/15. Abby LaFala, EHS teacher, from 4/20/15 to 5/25/15. Retirement, Serena Little, EHS librarian, effective 5/26/15. Ann Rogers, EHS counselor, effective 6/30/15. Dismissal, Jacqueline Edmondson, substitute bus driver, effective 3/18/15. Azure Gooch, TA Dugger assistant to the teacher, effective 3/24/15. Joyce McGrath, EHS custodian, effective 4/8/15. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any reports by any Board members or staff? Did I go anywhere interesting?
Just to go back and clarify something from your report. Can we get a regular update on fundraising, the fundraising effort? I'm not saying a formal presentation in the meeting, but maybe something just so we know how to comment in the public on this, the funds that come in have been in this, in this range.
I think that what we'll do, if you're okay with this, we will report fundraising efforts that we've actually landed. I think that if we're people that we've contacted or talked to, I think that would be, you know, they may feel pressure if we're announcing that in public. So if it's okay, if we, just ones that we've received, actual funding.
No, I think that'd be great.
And the way we'd like to do that is when we do receive funds, we'd like to bring them right here and recognize them, you know, in front of, at the camera and let them be out publicized in public, so. But if you would like to see who we visited, I think I sure would.
I'm really not even concerned about names as much as here's where we are on the break, here's where we're on the, you know, that kind of.
We can, we can certainly do that for you. No problem.
Dr. Gardenour, I mean, I was wondering if this was an appropriate time to talk a little bit about the report we received on the stadium, the costs? Is this an appropriate time?
That's, that's fine. Go ahead.
You want me to talk to Mr. Van Haas?
Come on, Mr. Van Haas.
Okay. I was just looking through this lengthy report here. And I was wondering, we went through and approved a motion about the income, income, hello, that's sales tax.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there parameters to where certain things only can be in that group? Or can you enlarge that? I mean, can you include masonry or metal or anything like that? Can you expand that?
We sure can. And I think that, excuse me, GRC has tried to do that as much as they can. I think there's a whole host list. I don't have the list in front of me. But I think there are a whole host of things. And I think even when we originally talked about this, we thought maybe the ceiling would be about $30,000 in savings. And I think we're, we've already exceeded that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've received, there's, I know we received several different things from General Shell. And there are a host of groups that they're doing that. They're doing everything from some plumbing equipment. Ms. Wilson, her staff have filled out several different credit applications with companies since we're buying it directly. So it has expanded to, you know, maybe down not to every little item, but bulk items that it kind of makes sense on, we've definitely done that.
So what, there are definite parameters? You can use, you can do this, but you can't do that?
There aren't any parameters, other than the fact that sometimes some of those items are the timing nature. Maybe they need, you know, three more tubes of caulk, so they run to, you know, they may go to Lowe's to do that rather than go through the process with us. But all those large-ticket items where there's, you know, several thousand dollars worth of product and/or savings, then they've definitely tried to do that.
The only other question I had was on page one of two on this continuation sheet. There's a couple items in here that are pretty close to budget. Earthwork erosion control's at eighty-seven percent. But your, the water distribution is thirty-eight percent over budget. If you go over budget on some areas, are we under budget on some others?
Yes, ma'am. And I asked that same question because I was concerned that if you looked at an item that said it's at a hundred percent, a hundred and six percent funding, what that means. And what Mr. Williams and GRC explained to me was that just to break down the way that things have to be paid, that sometimes it'll show up in one category, but it won't show up. There'll be a deficit in another fund. So he assured me that that all comes out in the wash, is the way that he explained that to me. So I had that same question, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Van Haas, before you sit down, before you go to your seat. Refresh my, we had an email about the baseball plans, future plans. Can you refresh my memory?
Yes. We, the original proposal was to take down the light poles that were on the side of the stadium now. Take those fixtures and light poles down and then set those back up on the fields at TA Dugger. The issue was, as they were taking those light poles down, they are so old, they really weren't in any shape to take down and put back up in that location. So we've kind of had to punt, for lack of a better word, on exactly what to do there. So the administration feels at this point in time, we certainly don't want to step out and bring to the Board yet another project when we have these others we're trying to complete. Although we are committed to finishing that as well, because that's what we said we would do. But we're working with some people in the community, maybe trying to find some ways to maybe have some poles donated, maybe some labor to erect those poles and do some of the work for us. So it kind of threw a wrench in the works when the poles weren't in shape to reinstall back at TA Dugger.
The lights are in shape, but the poles aren't.
Yes, sir. And we've, in talking with Mr. Trent, when we salvaged all those items, we probably salvaged anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of light fixtures, wiring and things like that, that we feel we can use again, so. So it was worth, it was worthwhile in that aspect. We have, we can reuse those items. And currently, Mr. Williams is working with Musco Lining, which is the company that we've purchased the lights for the stadium. They will do a free analysis on the light fixtures that we have and the fields at TA Dugger. And they'll give us a plan as to what would be required to put those back there, so.
Was there some discussion of using Joe O'Brien field also, or?
Yes, is, we, we, the high school has used Joe O'Brien field for, oh gosh, I guess ever since it's been there, yes. And so.
As a playing facility?
Yeah, yes, sir. In the last, I think last year, there were four high school games played on the baseball field there at the high school. I think two JV games and maybe two freshman games, so.
So no varsity?
No varsity, no. There's never been a varsity game on that campus.
Okay.
And, you know, when we looked at, the whole idea was to keep that facility and maybe one day have something nice to maybe play a home game on. But the reality is, how much money would we have to invest to have a facility as nice as the one that's at Joe O'Brien? And it really just doesn't make financial sense to even, you know, consider that at this point in time. But Park and Rec, they've been wonderful to work with. And Coach Wilson went and spoke with them on the front end of this to make sure that they were comfortable with the playing. And of course, they had some things, they obviously want to try to limit the play because, you know, fields need time to regenerate and do things like that. So they've spoken with the baseball coaches and there's a, you know, there's a partnership there, is the best way to describe that, on the use, appropriate use of that facility as well.
I don't know too many baseball players who haven't enjoyed being able to play on a, you know, a field like that.
Very nice. And again, what was lost, those, the field at the high school, it was, what it was mainly used for was the junior high. And since we have a field there now, it, and for all practical purposes, there was really no use for that field there, other than there was a summer league that's played there, but we're allowing them to play at the field at TA Dugger. It will hamper them because, you know, there's a potential we won't have lots there this summer. However, you know, again, we've worked with them and told them that we're committed to trying to get to that, to that point, maybe for the next season.
Oh, please tell Mr. Trent again, thank you for, from all the seniors who swim at the pool, that you raise the water temperature of the pool. They're coming back now.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, let's move to the regular agenda. First item is to approve the affiliate agreement between East Tennessee State University and Elizabethan City Schools for a term of one year commencing on July 31st, 2015, and shall automatically renew for four additional one-year periods for a maximum of five years. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second. We are so very fortunate to have East Tennessee State University in our backyard. And they do supply student teachers and intern teachers to us. And we're just very excited that we get to do it for much longer. We're very fortunate to have a feeding, you know, they feed into our school system and come and we get an opportunity to look at those teachers as a possibility for staff decisions in the future. So we certainly would hope that you would approve this for us.
Do I have any questions? All right. Item on the floor is to approve interim affiliate agreement between East Tennessee State University and Elizabethan City Schools for a term of one year commencing on July 31st, 2015, and shall automatically renew for four additional one-year periods for a maximum of five years. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is approve adjusting the ECS tuition and fee schedules for the 2015-2016 school year. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We have proposed a tuition increase in certain areas of about a hundred dollars. And we want to make sure that the Board knows that all the money generated from this is going to go, be divvied out to the schools for instructional materials and supplies that they need. We are so hoping to be able to take some students out. At the high school, we did not raise that. And that's going to be a, something that we want to do there very soon. So it will stay at three hundred dollars. The elementary will raise from seven to eight hundred and the junior high from three to four hundred. I will tell you that it's been quite some time and we've even reduced our tuition in the past during the enrollment enhancement phase of our capital projects. But we're at a point now that we feel that we're, we've kind of priced ourselves out of the market in some ways. A lot of school systems have even tuition throughout all grade levels. And they are much higher than what we have listed. And so the fee increase is about five dollars. And that will go to help buy pencils and paper on all those types of materials that students need. So we ask for your consideration on that.
Any questions or comments?
I have just a few. I met Dr. Gardenour and Ms. Wilson. I have just a few. I met Dr. Gardner and Ms. Wilson. I appreciate, they clarified a lot of things with me. I guess, one thing I'm hoping we'll do is approach this logically on a yearly basis. You kind of have a long-term plan. Here's where we're going with this. As I look at this, my concern is that the people outside Carter County, that we're raising it less than 10%, we're going 15% on elementary, we're almost 35% on middle school, no change on high school. And I support, I mean, I support the reasons that we're doing this, and I, and the different levels, and I know what, where we're trying to encourage growth, and I think that's a great thing. But I just think we need to have a logical process that we look at this on a year-to-year basis. And I'm not saying we have a goal that we eventually charge people. I think we need to be very fair and balanced in as far as what we can do, as far as offering, as long as we can make additional offerings for our own students as well, as well as the tuition students. So that's my personal thought.
And I think that that's a valid point, and I think that that's something that we're going to try to make sure that we do. We need to do this yearly, look at what the situations are at the building space and so forth, and just try to make a good decision about, about that. But we do have a good product. We do have excellent teachers, and we do produce great students, and we need to make sure that our fees are commensurate with what we're doing. So I'd be very happy to look at those year to year.
I know. It's always really nice when you have, when you talk to families that have chosen to put their child in our system, and they feel like it is money well spent. So, I, I did it for years until when Maggie, Abby was in school, and when Maggie was coming along, they couldn't take any additional kindergarten students. So, you know, we sold her house and moved into the city. But it is, you know, this is important for families and, and, but, you know, we haven't done this in a very, very long time.
I agree with Tyler that Elizabethan has a wonderful project, a product to offer, but there comes a time when if you add too many students, that becomes a detriment. It seems that, you know, if you had too many students, then the quality starts to go down. So I, I would seriously, seriously suggest that you look at the elementary numbers this year before you offer, you know, open it up again, because in my experience, the elementary schools are, are pretty full, as it is now.
And we're, we're about there. We'll, we'll be at capacity no matter, you know, what happens with the number of spaces we have available. But, you know, we have regulations that dictate the numbers in the classroom. So I appreciate that comment, and we'll be watching it for sure.
What are your fees? Are those for just the tuition-paying students, or this for all students?
The fees are for all students.
Do we collect that each year?
We do.
It's pretty well paid in. We, everybody pays it?
When I say everybody pays it.
You're not writing your $20 check there?
Yeah.
It seems like that's not one that we often go after and collect, and, but I'm just curious. I have parents who ask me what it's for and that sort of thing in, in the past.
We do use those, those fees go right into instructional materials, supplies, and those types of things. And we do make every effort to collect that money from parents.
Yeah, I mean, it is inexpensive, you know, relatively speaking, but just curious.
When we looked at some of the fee structures from other places, a lot of the, you know, I'm not going to pick on Science Hill, but we were looking at, and Dobbin's Bennett, but we were looking at some of the fee structures for science classes and some of the robotics classes and so forth. And we've managed to keep our fees in line. You know, they had, I won't call, and Tyler probably knows, but Dobbin's Bennett, they may have a list of 35 classes at the high school that require extra fees just to take that class, to buy materials and that type of thing. And we've done pretty well with charging what we're charging. But, you know, I think that as Mr. Fleming here has said, we need to look at it year to year because things are not getting cheaper. You know, it's requiring a lot.
It's about a dime a day. I just wondered.
Yes. It's definitely reasonable. I had the same thoughts you did. You know, of course, I, there's the good Samaritan side of me that always wants to say, why don't we go to that, just about, just have a voluntary donation per family? You know, you make a donation instead of saying, this is the fee structure. Of course, we're probably going to go broke, but, but, just a, just a thought. It's.
You'd voluntarily pay your taxes too, huh?
I thought that earlier this week, actually.
This is a good week for that.
Well, the windfall we had this week in the city, we got some help there.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, item on the floor is approve adjusting the ECS tuition and fee schedules for the 2015-2016 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Last item, approve textbooks for the 2015-2016 school year in the area of mathematics. Can I get a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Hoss?
Since our last meeting where you gave us blanket approval to meet the, the textbook committee state report deadline, we have been able to have a textbook committee meeting, and it went extremely well. You never know, when you get five different locations, you know, together, you know exactly what, what you're going to get from that. But things really fell into line. The junior high and high school both had settled on and preferred the, the same publication for those. So the math curriculum, sixth, sixth grade through your Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry will all be the same, the same publisher. And in the elementary schools, all three agreed to the exact same text as well. These, these are consumable textbooks, so each year they will send us a new one, which, you know, is something we've never had before. Again, all of these are approved items. The only, there are, what the committee asked for at the high school was to focus our textbook money on the new materials for the tested subjects, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. However, we just purchased math textbooks about three years ago. So the upper level courses, pre-calculus, trigonometry, proven stats, and calculus, those are typically smaller sized classes. And just to be honest, those, it seems like children in those classes tend to take care of their materials better. So those books, in a lot of ways, are almost brand new. Again, they're small class sizes. I think we have around 60 of each of those. And so if we offer one section each semester, you essentially can get, get by with 30. So numbers weren't an issue. They felt like they were in good enough shape to make it through this next adoption. So if you approve the selections for today, there'll be new adoptions for K through, again, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. The upper level, we will send a request to the state for a waiver to continue to use those materials. And when I spoke with Monty Wilson, who is the director of this department with the State of Edu, the State Department of Education, there are several school systems doing exactly what we're doing, especially with these upper level textbooks. You know, the higher order thinking, all of these things that are really coming into focus now are already in place in these higher level math courses. Those teachers.
There's no EOC in any of those courses, so I mean, we don't have to worry about our text reflecting what might be the change in the testing process or anything like that.
That is correct. These are not tested subjects. These teachers, you know, with, with the student demographic that takes this, that takes these courses, there's already so much supplementary material that the teacher provides already. So, you know, if there is a change in standards, you know, 18 months from now, they're more than ready, willing, and able to supplement if for some reason these texts, you know, there were a hole here or there. And so that's all included in the waiver letter that the high school textbook committee put together, and I will be, if, if the board approves this, then I'll be sending off for their consideration. So that's kind of the thought process. Again, consumable textbooks through, through eighth grade. I don't know, the Algebra I, Algebra II, that may be consumable as well. Those may be consumable. Again, we've never, never gone that route before.
Are the elementary schools pretty much on board with the same programs as well?
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different publisher for K5, but they all three had the same, had the same thought process. One school was kind of teetering back and forth between two, saw benefits to two different publishers. The other two were sold this way, and the other said, hey, we're fine. These are, these are both great texts. We have no problem going that route. So, again, that's unusual. So, so we feel very comfortable moving forward. This will give our teachers the one tool to use to be able to meet the standard changes that come down the, you know, in the next 18 months when they do modify standards. The positive to using a consumable textbook is should anything change in the next 18 months, they have agreed to realign all of the documentation to reflect that. So.
Any questions or comments? I'm on the floor. Approve textbooks for the 2015-2016 school year in the area of mathematics. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are going to be having a workshop Monday, April 20th, at 6:30, and our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held Thursday, May 21st, 2015, 6:30, in the Math Players Boardroom. Don't forget, we have lots of things going on in the schools, honors days, goodness, got graduation coming up. We have lots of programs, so you have no reason to not get out and enjoy life. So, thank you all very much. Can I get a motion?
Do we need to do anything on telemedicine formally?
Oh.
Before we go, you made a motion, and it was approved, and move forward with that.
Would it be appropriate to table that? Well, we've already done, it was a call through a motion, so what would be the next, our next step?
We could put it on for next month, after, if anyone wants to review that, we could put it on for next month.
Probably a good idea.
I think so, too.
If you're going to be talking to other companies, would you rather have two months to?
Well, we'll see if we can make any contact with, with anyone, and see if that's going to be a viable option for us. And I'll try to communicate that with you all, and then maybe next month we'll put a resolution to dissolve that. We, we were very smart to consult our attorney before, before moving forward.
I didn't know if we were under any obligation since we voted to do something and then.
Yeah, I think that's, that's smart. Let's go, we'll dissolve that and start the process of looking for another group.
And something else that came up in one of our work sessions that I'd like to start thinking about and discussing is Dr. May's thoughts on possible reconfiguring, reconfiguring elementary schools down the road, or at least studying that. And I hate to put that in the lap of a brand-new superintendent right off the bat, but just, you know, kind of start gathering some thoughts on that. I thought that was right.
Trent, that, that's fine. Transportation is our issue there.
Absolutely.
But I, I think that that is well worth looking at.
And it may be a dead.
No.
But at least look into.
We, we would be happy to do that. And, you know, I don't know if, if you all want to look at a, a study to see a feasibility study on that. We could bring a group to do that, or if you'd rather us look at that. I mean, we have, I can tell Mr. Hutchins is saying back there, we have talked about that. He's covering his face, but we have talked about that several times, just trying to think, figure out the logistics. It would, it would increase our costs as far as the amount of buses that we'd have to have. And but I, we have always, Dr. May's brought that up before, and we've always thought that would be a, a really neat deal, if we could really look at and afford to do it, because it does, other systems, small, like ours, have done that. And I think that it's a, it's great if you walk into a K, K through one or pre-K through one school, and everything in that school is focused on that level of student. And you have a principal that's an expert in that area, and so there's a lot of benefit. So, but we'll be happy to look at that again. And, you know, if we want to do a feasibility study, we can try to.
I just don't want to forget about, you know, we may say.
No.
Are you talking about certain grade levels, like K1, 2 at one school, 3?
Well, just studying where we are. Not necessarily saying that, but.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, the last few years of my teaching career, I taught in a building where it was all fifth grade. The whole school was fifth grade. And there were a lot of positive things to it, but there were also a lot of negatives as well. And that's all I'll say about that.
Well, on that note, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, guys.